Call to order the city council works at, excuse me, council meeting for CDP's Grand Forks Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. City Clerk, please go roll.
Mayor Steve Gander, Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Ben Pachchavinsky.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Ryan Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does the term quorum please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the sacred flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have an open forum opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may refer to staff, boards, and commissions for research and future council agendas of appropriate. Is anybody here to address the council on items not on the current agenda? I see none. Move on to approval of minutes for consider approving the minutes of regular meeting for East Grand Forks Council, March 19th, 2024. Move. Do by Riappel?
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachchavinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Scheduled bid lettings, there is none. Move on to the scheduled public hearing. Public hearing to consider a request for the Third Street Northwest intersection within the BNSF right of way to be vacated. Is there motion for the public hearing? Move. Do by Vetter?
Second.
Second by Riappel. One in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. We are now in the public hearing. Mr. Rettinen.
All right. Thank you, Council President, members of the audience. I'll give a quick rundown on update on kind of the timeline of the Quiet Zone project and what's led us to where we are today. And then, once I wrap up, there'll be an opportunity for anybody who wants to come up and speak to introduce yourselves and do so. The Quiet Zone project that we're looking at, and specifically what we're here for tonight, I know the picture's sort of small. The red block on the far left side, the Third Street Northwest crossing on the railroad section itself, right by the corner of the Sacred Heart School, is the crossing that we're looking at and considering that would be closed as part of the greater Quiet Zone project and a requirement to put the Quiet Zone into effect. So, as we talk about the potential closure, we're looking at that specific intersection. A few project details to walk through with the Quiet Zone project as a whole and some history of it. Proposed as part of the project that's being considered by city council tonight, there's a number of upgrades to the greater corridor and those three-block stretch that we looked at. The gate system that's on Second Avenue Northeast, that's the road connected to the Louis Murray Bridge that leads into kind of Luigi's Gas Station, that would get a new gate signal system as part of this project. There'd be a number of pedestrian crossing improvements at both Second Avenue and at Central Avenue. curb and gutter improvements throughout the project area, including on Hill Street and on Second Avenue as a, or I'm sorry, Third Street, as it runs alongside Sacred Heart's property, in the area where the Third Street crossing would close. And there would be fencing installed from the flood wall all the way to Central Avenue through that area again where the Third Street closure would take place. So, it's a pretty large project spread out over three blocks. History of the discussion of this Quiet Zone project dates back to, in this current case, since August of 2017. In August 2017, some residents of the community and members of Sacred Heart came to the city council asking them to consider putting a Quiet Zone into effect. And really, since that time, there's been city staff and engineering working in conjunction with BNSF and Minnesota DOT to look at the requirements from a design perspective that would need to be put in place in order to put a Quiet Zone in effect. In January 2020, the city mailed letters to neighbors and property owners along the proposed Quiet Zone area stating that as a requirement of the Quiet Zone, the Third Street crossing that we're discussing tonight would need to be closed. At that time, there were 16 responses from residents and property owners in the area. Eleven of the responses indicated that they were in favor of the Quiet Zone, even though it would mean that the Third Street crossing would be required to be closed as part of it. In addition to those 11, two others were in favor but had a few conditions. One condition was they wanted to see the Third Street crossing stay open with the Quiet Zone being in effect. Another said that they'd like to see some more safety design improvements around the school itself. And a couple answered, one answered no completely, one other, their response was a handwritten note and it was illegible to be able to read the response. But, as a whole, as many as 13 of the 16 were in favor of it. In July 2020, following that letter, BNSF, with some correspondence with the city, reminded the city council at the time that a condition of the Quiet Zone to be put in effect would mean that the Third Street crossing would be required to be closed. And they went as far as offering a financial incentive towards the project to be able to help do that. They've offered, and we'll look at that as we look at project costs, but they've offered an incentive between BNSF and MINDOT of $206,000 to go towards the project. And then, finally, in December of 2020, with the feedback it got from residents, the city council at that time passed a resolution to agree to close the Third Street Northwest crossing and to file a notice of intent with the railroad that it intended to take the next step in putting together designs and plans for this Quiet Zone that we're talking about today. Since that time, largely, the project's been in the design phase. At that December 2020 resolution meeting, Mr. Emery's, the city engineer, he indicated that some of the funding that MINDOT had committed to help with the gate system upgrades towards this project would be 2022 or 2023 before those funds would become available. And those funds are all still available to us and are planned as part of this project, even though we are now in the early parts of 2024. But, the design has been a long lead time to get to this point. As of March 15th of this year, the city of East Grand Forks has committed already almost $96,000 in engineering and design towards this project. The bids were released, bid documents were released on January 17th of this year. We opened the bids on February 7th, and those bids are valid for 60 days. So, the meeting tonight is really the city council's opportunity to take action on the bids that they've opened. That 60-day deadline is April 7th, so at the end of this week. Why would the Third Street crossing need to close? That's been a common question. There's really two aspects of it. Number one is safety. As BNSF and MINDOT reviewed the plans and the requirements of a Quiet Zone, their number-one desire is to do anything possible in their design standards to create a more safe rail crossing, railroad environment. And they feel the number-one way to be able to do that is to limit the number of crossings where vehicles or pedestrians would need to cross the tracks. So, that is one of the reasons that they've offered the incentive, the financial incentives for the closure. MINDOT has gone as far as offering an incentive to pay 100% of the upgrade cost for the Second Avenue Northeast signal system. And that has an approximate value of about $400,000 today. Beyond safety, the project cost itself, there was an opportunity early on to look at in the design back in 2020 to potentially look at keeping the Third Street crossing open. Because of the kind of odd angle that that crossing has as it crosses the tracks, it's not a straight line, in a kind of a straight square intersection, there's not the ability to stack cars one behind another as you get to that crossing. So, there would need to be what they call a quad-arm gate system there. It would have four rail arms that would drop rather than the two traditional that you would see. And BNSF indicated early on if there was a desire to keep that crossing open, they would require the city to pay the full expense of the install of that system. That system, at the time, we estimated to be about $750,000, $2 million. In addition to that, if the city opted to keep the Third Street crossing open for traffic, those financial incentives that I touched on would not be available to the city. Total project costs, as we're looking at them today, the project that we have available in front of us tonight, the city's expected project cost is about $1.375 million. That's the project bid of just over $1 million in construction costs that the council has on their agenda this evening. And then, some of the soft costs, the planning and engineering that I've talked about already, contingencies and labor and materials. In addition to the city's investment of that number, our partners at BNSF and at Minnesota DOT have committed additional funds to the total project. So, all in, once you look at the city's incentives that it's been offered for the Third Street closure, for the gate system install that MINDOT has committed to and other funds that BNSF has committed, the total investment from the city's perspective is about $1.1 million. And the partners between BNSF and MINDOT would come in with another $700-plus thousand to the project. And that is the presentation I have tonight. We can go back to the map. If there's any questions on the area we're discussing or the project itself, please come up to the mic and state your name and your address and go from there.
Hi, my name's Arlene Holtman. And I'm just wondering, was this ever brought to the citizens to vote to have this Quiet Zone and to close that street? I don't remember receiving anything saying that I could give my opinion if I agree with it. I don't. I don't want that crossing closed. But, I have, I'm just wondering, was there anything put to the public, you know, the citizens of East Grand Forks to vote on this? Who, I mean, who just decided this, is what I'm asking?
Yep, thank you. To your question, was there ever anything brought to the citizens as a whole of the city of East Grand Forks? The answer is...
Yeah, that we could give our opinion on it?
No, there was never a vote of the citizens itself.
Why wasn't there?
In 2020, the property owners directly abutting the potential Quiet Zone area, the streets that touch the Quiet Zone on either side of it, were sent letters letting them know that the city was moving forward with planning and taking their responses. And so, it's specific to, the requirements of the public notices are specific to the property owners that have an abutting neighboring property line.
All right. But, you know, it's a public street that everyone uses. So, I thought the whole citizens of East Grand Forks should have a say on whether this should be closed or not. Not just the people that live in that area, which I used to live there. And I love the train and I love hearing the whistle. And I don't know what, why they want it closed. And I think everyone should have been able to vote on it, not just a few. That's my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to address the city council? If you'd like, please come up, state your name and your address, please.
Reuben Samuelson, 124 Fourth Street Northwest. I've been here since my grandson was born, nine years ago. Nine years ago, they've been talking about this silent crossing. Nine years, we've been listening to those whistles blow at all times of the night. I worked on the railroad 36 years. I understand train horns. And I understand the safety and the reason we need those. But, I don't feel that we need to continue that way because I watched these kids at the playground, at the church, huddled down to get out of the noise, to get out of the sound. My grandson would run into the house from the backyard because of that horn. Now, BNSF, I know, is heavy on safety. They love it. And we've gone over to the park over there when a train's gone by. And it's amazing that there aren't any hearing problems with those kids at that school, or the teachers, or anybody in that area. It just echoes off all those buildings. As far as the Third Street crossing, I very seldom ever use that. And I live right over there. But, I know it's there. And I understand that it would be nice to accommodate the school if they have parking issues and stuff like that, if that can be looked at also. But, I'm not thinking about that. I'm thinking about those kids. It's just, it seriously affects them. And, of course, I'm retired now, so the horns do kind of bother me a little bit more than they used to. But, anyway, that's what I wanted to say. I think we've got to get those kids, we don't want to buy them all earmuffs, but maybe the BNF would chip in on it. But, all I know is that if you got the BNSF to help fund some of this project, they'll help a lot. I've been, I was supervisor for 11 years in Alliance, Nebraska. And I have a lot of, a lot of good feelings with the BNSF. They like to do the right thing. Anyway, I vote for, if the requirement says that you have to absolutely close that crossing, and we can't work around it somehow, then I'm for it. But, I'm for the kids. I want them to not have to hear that. It's fine to see that nice train go by there every once in a while. But, not, let me share a quick story. You have a trainman and a train crew on Easter Sunday. They got called into work. They don't have enough seniority to have the day off, so they have to go to work. And those switch crews get these older locomotives that got these loud, noisy horns. And they just like making their trip out to the yard back and forth there. So, they can lay on that horn and wake everybody else up because they have to be up to do their job. So, I chased the train seriously, all the way from, from East Grand Forks, because I wanted to talk to that crew and ask them why they were being so hard on that horn. And I followed them all down on that Highway 2 there, as far as I could. And they weren't stopping yet at any crossings. And it seemed like the minute they got past a certain point, they still had crossings up there. There was buildings and stuff. They quit blowing the horn altogether. So, I pulled up and I wanted to stop to them. But, of course, they aren't, they're not going to stop for some guy pulling alongside the road. But, so it can be done. There are silent crossings all over the world, all over the country. And I hope we can get it figured out. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the city council?
Hello? I'm Clecia Christensen. I live at 124 Fourth Street. If you look at that map and you look at Sacred Heart, actually, I'm going to point it out to everybody where I live. So, if you see a little square house, I'm at a long house right next to it. There's one car parked in front of that area. That's where I live. And I've lived in that house for nine years. And I've raised two kids there, got a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old. And I cannot tell you how many nights, in the middle of the night, I have sick kids, sad kids, nursing babies, 3:00 AM, 1:00 AM. They blast their horn at the first red spot. They blast their horn at the second red spot. And then, they blast it long on that third red spot. And they hold it. And then, 10 minutes later, another car, another train's going by doing the same thing. And this is in the middle of the night, every day, every night, day in, day night. We try to walk our family around these beautiful, nice, like, park areas, go to the swing sets, go to, walk to Sherlock Park. Immediately when we step out our front door, trains going by, horns blasting. I work from home. I work in the front room of my house right there. In meetings, in Zoom calls, I have to mute myself because there's a train going by interrupting my meetings. And also, I get chronic migraines. And I think that that is largely due to dealing with some of these train horns. It's also like a genetic thing, but also, it does not help. When you have a migraine, if anybody's been a sufferer of that, dealing with a train horn going by. My main thing is, there's no limits. It's all the time. It's every day. You never can predict when it's going to happen. You can't plan around it. And you cannot live your life and enjoy your life in our neighborhood, outside our home, or inside our home with these train horns going on. I mean, inside the home, we have to stop our conversation because there's a train going by. And we cannot enjoy summertime because there's trains blowing their horns going by. So, as far as the crossing getting closed, I kind of like my, that's my father who's been living with us since then. I haven't used that crossing. I used it like two times in the last 10 years, nine, 10 years. So, it being closed for me is not that big of a deal. I think you guys would appreciate the cost benefit of not having to pay that money if you do close it. But, if it doesn't get closed, that better not be what prevents this Quiet Zone from happening. Because it needs to happen. And, you know, also, turnover in the neighborhood. People are leaving. They're not, they cannot live and stay in these homes and in this neighborhood with these train horns going by. I mean, I cannot tell you how many times I've thought about moving because of that. And with that being the number-one primary reason. And also, could I even sell my house? If somebody happens to look at my house when there's a train going by, they ain't going to buy it. So, it's, maybe closing that crossing is an inconvenience for people. They might have to wait for a train. But, I cannot, you know, I cannot see the logic in not making this Quiet Zone happen. And also, you know, talking about the history of the project from 2017, I'm pretty sure there were plans back in 2015 earlier. There's been other attempts and other conversations about making Quiet Zone happen here. So, it didn't just get brought up in 2017. It's been happening long before that. And I don't know what happened to that other project. But, I'm really glad to see that, how much progress that there has been so far. And that's, you know, one reason I haven't put up a big stink because I can see that you guys are making progress and making things happen. And then, if anybody wants me to share the many, many, many gigabytes of videos I've taken of our family having to stop our lives to listen to train horns, I can share that with you. So, and it is, they are at the decibel that they are extremely damaging. There's no doubt about it. I'd love to see some studies done to hear, to see what's happened. Because it's not like it's quiet train horns or, you know, they're loud. They are extremely, extremely loud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else want to address the city council?
Hi, I'm Richard Osborne. I live with my wife at 111 Third Street Northeast. So, we're pretty much right in the middle of those two vertical crossings. And we moved in about two years ago. So, we missed the initial canvassing of people's opinions. And we are very firmly in favor of the Quiet Zone, even if it means closing that crossing. I work from home, but I drive my wife to work and pick her up on lunch and stuff. So, we actually use that exact intersection about six times a day. You know, in the morning, there and back, lunch, there and back, end of the day, there and back. And I think that the pros of Quiet Zone actually greatly outweigh the cons of losing the intersection. And some people are concerned about lost time getting to Sacred Heart coming up from the point. So, I actually went out the other day and I decided to drive and time myself from the turn left off of the point and then use that intersection and then use the road immediately on the other side of the train tracks. And I did about 10 times each way. And I found at maximum, there's about a 10-second difference using the drop-off lane right by Sacred Heart as opposed to using the actual intersection that some people are worried about closing. So, I really don't think that the negative impact is that great. I think some people just don't realize how much of a negative impact these train horns have on the people that actually live right next to the tracks and have to hear it day in and day out. I mean, just this afternoon, I counted three trains that went by. And I had to, I had to stop working and just wait for the horns each and every time. And I know that, like in summertime, when it gets hot, we can't sleep with the window open in our room because the train horns are just so loud. They'll wake us up every time. They'll come through at 10:00 PM, midnight, 1:00 AM, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM. And that, that really affects you after a while. So, I just wanted to share that information. And the people that we've talked to in our neighborhood outside of this as well have also been very in favor of it. Our neighbor runs a daycare. She's got a lot of little kids. And when they play outside, you know, listening to all those train horns go by, that's not good for them. You know, as an adult, I can tell that, you know, that's very painful standing outside, walking in from my car. I have to plug my ears. So, I really do think that this is going to be a great benefit for the neighborhood, even at the cost of losing that small intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council with public hearing? Mr. Emery?
I'd like to thank everyone for your input tonight. If the council decides to move forward with the project, the project to do all the improvements at these three intersections, that work would be completed this summer. Our goal is to try to get it completed kind of between the timeframe when school gets out and before school goes back into session. So, we're, you know, really minimizing disruption to especially Sacred Heart. But, one thing I want to point out, and we've been working hard in communication with BNSF, but as Reed had mentioned, they have gate improvements that they need to complete at Second Avenue Northeast. And until their work is completed, we may not be able to establish the Quiet Zone. And they're looking at either late this fall or even the spring of 2025. So, again, even though we get our work done this year, if BNSF doesn't get their work completed, you know, we will still have blowing horns until, well, let's say, the spring of 2025. So, just wanted to let you guys know that, that, you know, once you see the street improvements completed this summer, this fall, you know, the Quiet Zone may still not go in effect until spring of 2025. So...
Right. Is anybody else have any questions for public hearing?
Christopher Leiter, N-Tech Industries, 304 Central Avenue. We're right on the corner of Central Avenue and Third Street there. And I would have to agree, it's impossible to do any kind of business on the phone when you're sitting there listening to that. And you can see the kids wincing. But, one of my reasons for being here today was we understood that there was some potential property changes that may have to happen to our property. And I'm wondering if anybody has any more info on that.
There's any improvements that...
Somewhere along the lines through the years, somebody talked to us about maybe moving our property line back four or five feet. And the owner of the property is curious to know what that may look like if there is any.
Yeah, this project wouldn't affect your property at all. The only thing is from the tracks going, I'm going to say, south on Central Avenue.
For the median on Central Avenue on Phase 1.
Yep. So, from the tracks to the end of that meeting will be median, will be roughly 100 feet. So, maybe, you know, the only thing I could see that affecting is if someone was coming south on Central, trying to take a left-hand turn into your property there, that would be the only effect.
Property line will not be changing.
Right.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Somebody else?
Got one here, Mark.
Dale Helms for the public hearing, or is this for the discussion during approval?
Well, I was just going to comment.
I just wanted to make sure. Just asking. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody that come up and spoke. And I live three blocks north on Second Avenue there. So, when they're talking about those train horns and, I like the story that he told because it does seem like that when those trains go through, they just keep hanging on to that cord as long as they can. And it is very loud. Even down where I'm at, it's very loud. So, what they're saying, I guess all I'm doing is just kind of mostly verifying the noise that they're talking about. I've been there for 50 years in that, right in that area. And it hasn't gotten any better in 50 years. in 50 years, so we need to do something. So.
Eric Gander.
Well, I was just alerting you to Mr. Helms. Thank you. Do you want me to say a word, though?
No.
I will. I hope you all know, so much give and take has occurred here. The residents have weighed in. Even though we didn't take it to a vote of the whole people, I have sat in about a dozen meetings, public meetings, over the years for this very thing, wanting input, wanting input, wanting to customize this to the maximum benefit of everyone involved. So the idea of bringing that input in in a friendly, you know, cooperative way with give and take, now we go back to BNSF, find out where the wiggle room is. Nope, it's a hard line here. We cannot get over the closing of Third. Okay, how do we accommodate that? We're trying to improve the trail connection that wraps around there on the wreck trail to get around through the road closure and back up, and improving the parking for the kids at Sacred Heart School and whatnot. And now coming back to the residents, are you okay if we do it this way? And you don't even know the behind-the-scenes wrangling that's taken place with our city attorney, our city engineer, our city administrator, the arm twisting and the friendly give and take that's had to take in place, back to BNSF, back to all these different parties. And I'm really, whoever else said it, I'm proud of everyone in this room who came and spoke, and I'm proud of everyone sitting behind one of these tables who has done the heavy lifting to get us to this point. Do you understand a ten-year pull? And whoever said, yeah, it's more than seven years, it's way more than 10 years, that's a long pull. And somebody didn't give up, and I'm really proud of that group that didn't give up.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to just say one more quick thing. I have to appreciate letting me know that he knew that I was concerned about this problem, and that's how I knew about this meeting today. So I appreciate it.
If there's no other persons, we'll close the public hearing. Move. By Better?
Second.
Second by Riappel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is now adjourned. Move on to consent agenda. There is none. Move on to acknowledge receipt of reports of officer boards and commissions. Regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission from March 6, 2024. Communication, there is none. Old business, there is none. Move on to new business. Number four, consider adopting resolution 24-03-30, primarily closing the Third Street Northwest Crossing DOT number 081280B to vehicular traffic from BNSF Redway, install continuous curb along Second Street Northwest and Hill Street. File the resolution and authorize the City Council President, City Administrator to execute all necessary documents. Move. By Pachivinsky.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Discussion, questions? Mr. Hutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder to all the council, the city charter requires that we vacate this, and that's the point to the public hearing we held tonight. It does require a three-quarter majority approval, so that would be six out of seven. I have to vote in favor of this for it to pass.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I'll go to roll call.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to number five. Consider approving the highway rail grade crossing closure agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and BNSF Railway Company for the closure of Third Street Northwest Crossing and donation to the city of elimination of the crossing. Move. By Riappel?
Second.
Second by Pachivinsky. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number seven, consider adopting resolution 24-03-26, accepting the bid and awarding project for 2022 city project number three for the quiet zone, street, and sidewalk improvements to op construction for a total of $1,051,314.50. Move. By Larson. Second. Second by Riappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number seven, consider adopting resolution 24-03-26, accepting the bid and awarding project for 2022 city project number three for the quiet zone, street, and sidewalk improvements to op construction for a total of $1,051,314.50. Move. By Larson. Second by Riappel. Or Helms? Excuse me. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number eight, consider awarding the annual sewer cleaning and tubizing project Johnson Jet Line for a total of $69,832.15. Move. By Helms?
Second.
Second by Peterson? Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number nine, consider adopting resolution 24-04-31, accepting and awarding the bid for the City Hall roof replacement to Equity Builders Company for a total of $635,560. Move. By Larson. Second. Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 10, consider approving the grant agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and the Bass Pro Shops and Cabella's Outdoor Fund for $3,700 to support the purchase of solar lights for the boat ramp area at LaFave Park. Move. By Riappel?
Second.
Second by Pachivinsky. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 11, consider authorizing the hiring process to fill the park and recreation specialist position. Move. By Pachivinsky.
Second.
Second by Peterson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
No.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution 24-04-32, approving the proposed increase to Mayor, Council President, and Councilmember salaries starting in January of 2025. Move. By Riappel?
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Mr. Helms?
I've been thinking pretty hard about this one, and I feel that I'm not sitting here for the money, I'm sitting here for the people. And I think with all the cuts we've been making and trying to keep our taxes down and all the increasing in the parks and rec fees and stuff like that that we've done to try and make ends meet, I just feel that this is not something I can support. It's just not right to, we've been making all these cuts, and then we're going to sit here and vote ourselves a raise? I'm not buying it.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
No.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
No.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 13, consider waiving the special event-related fees for the Cruz and Forks Downtown Car Show for the 2024 events. Move. By Better?
Second.
Second by Riappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 14, consider adopting resolution 24-04-33, filing the proposed assessments and setting the final public hearing date for May 7, 2024. Move. By Larson.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to claims.